This meeting to order for the Oskaloosa City Council. Today is December 1st, 2014. Why don't we start with the invocation by Father Jeff Belger, St. Mary's Catholic Church? Please come to the podium.
We gather here tonight to recognize the great history of the city of Oskaloosa. And we recognize also that we have a great debt of gratitude that we owe to all those who have gone before us, who established this city and built it up to what we have received. We gathered today to recognize several people whose service to this city has been for many years, and so we ask God's gift of peace and for them as well. And then we look forward to the future, recognizing that there are many challenges, but also many opportunities that we will have opportunity to shape the future of the city of Oskaloosa. I'd like to offer to you as a prayer this evening, prayer that was used at the opening of every session of Vatican Council II, little over 50 years ago in Rome, for the Catholic Church. And so we begin, "In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, Amen." We stand before you, Holy Spirit, conscious of our sinfulness, but aware that we gather in your name. Come to us, remain with us, and enlighten our hearts. Give us light and strength to know your will, to make it our own, and to live it in our lives. Guide us by your wisdom, support us by your power, for you are God sharing the glory of Father and Son. You desire justice for all, enable us to uphold the rights of others. Do not allow us to be misled by ignorance, or corrupted by fear or favor. Unite us to yourself in the bond of love, and keep us faithful to all that is true. As we gather in your name, may we temper justice with love, so that all our decisions may be pleasing to you, and earn the reward promised to good and faithful servants. You live and reign with the Father and the Son, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Thanks, Father.
Do join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Here.
Jimenez?
Here.
Ben Zettin?
Yes.
Walling?
Here.
Yates?
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, usually in December, we will recognize employees who have been are hitting a landmark or a mile mark in their service to the city of Oskaloosa. And so, we're going to take the opportunity to do it at this time. You know, we talk about the, you know, what is it that is the worth of having employees that are here for 20, 25, 30 years? And it's the institutional memory that I point to, where we can talk to these folks, and they can say, yes, this is why we do things the way we do. They bring the experience to the job, so that if someone younger is working, or less experienced is working alongside of them, they have the ability to teach. And through their, through their teaching and their instruction, then they enhance the experience of the younger worker, and then carry that forward, so that when these folks retire, the trend of the way we serve the people continues. And so, tonight, we've got four plaques that we would like to hand out. Is John Plum here?
He couldn't make his bed yet.
Okay. Let's go through here. Mr. Gary Kuchar. The plaque reads, "Employee Recognition." The plaque is awarded to Gary Kuchar for 25 years of service to the city of Oskaloosa as an employee of the police department. Gary, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Paullette Groth, not seeing her here. William Allman. Plaque reads, "This plaque is awarded to William Allman for 25 years of service to the city of Oskaloosa as an employee of the wastewater department." Bill, thank you very much for your service. That takes us to the next part of the agenda, which is community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included in the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. Ask to keep statements brief. Time shall be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions that are to be asked of the city staff, council members, or the mayor, we ask that they speak to them individually first, before coming to the full council, so that way, if you have any questions about how things work, maybe we can get those researched and answered away from the full meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only, so is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is the consent agenda. These are items that are routine in nature, usually non-controversial, and so, we have various board and committee commission minutes, claims. I wanted to draw your attention, though, to item E. It's an ordinance, third reading of an ordinance to vacate and sell a 60-foot-by-16-foot north-south alley adjacent to 1002 North Second Street. The approval of the resolution approving the deed and authorizing the sale of the alley. And also, item I, considering a resolution scheduling a time for hearing, considering the matter of levying a special assessment against private property for sidewalk replacement by the city in accordance with Section 12.12 of the city code. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, a second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zettin?
Yes.
For State?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on, item number seven is the announcement of various vacancies we have on boards and commissions. The first one is the airport commission. There's one vacancy to fill upon appointment for the unexpired term ending on December 31st of 2015. It's a five-member board that typically meets the first Monday of the month, and we have four males and one vacancy at this time. Building Code Board of Appeals, we have one vacancy to fill. It's upon appointment to serve at the pleasure of the mayor. This is a five-member board that meets as needed. Currently, we have three males and one female and one vacancy. Board of Adjustment, we have three vacancies. One to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on December 31st, 2016, and two that serve five-year terms that end on December 31st of 2019. It's a five-member board that typically meets as needed on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Currently, we have four males serving with one vacancy. The next is the Historic Preservation Commission. There are two vacancies to fill. These are three-year terms that end on December 31st, 2017. It's a seven-member board that meets as needed. Currently, we have six females and one male serving. And last is the Housing Trust Fund Committee. We have one at-large member to serve a three-year term that ends on January 31st of 2018. There are five at-large members on the committee that typically meet every other month, three female and two males currently serving. Into the regular agenda, Aide A. First item is to public hearing. We're going to consider an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Oskaloosa, rezoning the east portion of the property at 615 E. Avenue West from Urban Family Residential, which is an R2 district, to limited industrial district. Mahaska County Emergency Management Agency is the contract holder, and the Oskaloosa Community School District is the deed holder, have submitted a rezoning request for the property located at 615 E. Avenue West. The parcel in consideration is .77 acres in area, and presently, the western portion of the property is zoned LI, that is limited industrial district, while the east portion is zoned R2, which is Urban Family Residential. Mahaska County Emergency Management Agency wants to have the entire parcel be in zoning compliance for vehicle storage purposes. Table 17.08B, permitted uses by zoning districts in the Oskaloosa municipal code indicates that both long-term and short-term vehicle storage is permitted within an LI district. Short-term and long-term vehicle storage is not permitted within an R2 district. Planning and zoning commission considered this item on November 10. Recommended by a vote 7-0, that the city council approve the request to rezone the above-mentioned parcels to LI. So at this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this change? Seeing done, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion in support for the zoning change for this from R2 to LI?
Moved.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a question for Keelish. Do we go out to the surrounding neighbors and get their input, just like we do on other activities? I didn't see that in here. Did we get any response back?
We did not get any, we don't get a survey. Usually, on alley vacates, we get a survey response.
Right.
But on rezone items, we don't take a survey.
Oh, we just inform them, and then they're responsible to come and speak?
Yes, on P&amp;Z, as well as on city council meeting.
Okay.
Having said that, there was a lady who attended the planning and zoning meeting. She was more concerned that her house is located in a limited industrial, so she didn't have any concerns with this property being rezoned.
Okay, thank you.
You put a sign out front, don't you?
Yes, we did.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, it is important the public knows that it is changing, and so they could get a different neighbor, but I went through the list, and it doesn't look like there's anything that it's, that wouldn't have to have a conditional vote, right? If it was some of the odd, that's not what I'm trying to say.
No use.
Yeah, something that was, would be objectable to a resident. Is that right? The Cs and the Ps, that, that's what I'm trying to talk about.
Right, right, right. I mean, these are two different land uses that's going to be allowed, but if you see half of that parcel is presently zoned as LI, so it's basically extending the present prop, the land uses, storage purposes. They want to make, be consistent with our code, zoning code, so.
Thank you.
No other comments and questions? Roll call, please.
Ben Zettin?
Yes.
For State?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Moving on, item B is another public hearing. This is to consider an ordinance to vacate and sell 120-foot-by-16-and-a-half-foot of a north-south public alley adjacent to 211 North J. Street. This is the first reading. Terry Wolfswinkle, the owner of 211 North J., has requested that the portion of the north-south alley adjacent to his property be vacated. Mr. Wolfswinkle owns the property directly east at 211 North J. Street, and on the west side, 1112 B. Avenue West, of the requested alley vacate. The proposed alley has been paved in concrete when the chiropractic clinic was built in 2001. The city conducted a survey of the households with direct access to this alley. Among the residents who responded, a total of three, one of them, Mr. Wolfswinkle, wanted the alley to be vacated, and two of them, Fisher Quality Car Wash and Fisher Investments, did not want the alley vacated. Fisher Quality Car Wash at 1101 A. Avenue West does not want the alley vacated because it serves his customers. Fisher Investments at 1107 A. Avenue West does not want the alley vacated because it will restrict access to the new storefronts. Both 1101 and 1107 A. Avenue West will have access to their properties along the south half of the alley from A. Avenue. This alley also contains Oskaloosa water, Mid-American Energy Utility Infrastructure, and MCG infrastructure. Isma rights need to be retained for access to those utilities. The item was originally brought before the city council on August 18th of 2014. At that meeting, Fisher Quality Car Wash had stated they had plans to develop their property, which resulted in a denial of the alley vacate. However, because no site plan has been submitted by Quality Car Wash since that meeting, Terry Wolfswinkle has reapplied for the alley vacate. Planning and zoning commission considered this item at their November 10, 2014, meeting, and is recommended by a vote of 7-0 that the city council approve the alley vacation request. And so, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Would anyone care to speak to this?
I'm Gary Fisher, and I have the quality car wash 1101 A. And we're still actively pursuing the pet wash that I talked about last time we did this. And according to Mr. Powell, him and I, we had a meeting, and that's attainable. I would have to have a variance because of the green, green, green law, but other than that, the setbacks and those things are, we're okay with those. And so, I mean, I have paperwork from the contractors, cement contractor, and the brick contractor and stuff, that we're working on this. And so, it's not something we just let lie. And so, if that's the concern, that's, we're doing that. And something else has come up in the meantime, is a boundary dispute, and the alley could come into play with that, too, if that's not settled, and it hasn't been. So, that's something that's, I don't know where that's going to go yet, but that's something the lawyers are messing with, so.
Can you band on what the dispute is?
Yeah, between, it'd be the, the north side of my property and the south side of his, there's about, approximately three to four foot there that is, according to the city maps and everything, and it's on his property, but it's been car wash property. It was car wash property before he even bought that, so it was cemented to car wash, and it was all done before he bought that property. And he's laid claim to that, and has had it located, and threatened to build a fence on that. And if he has, it'll restrict the exit from the car wash, especially in the automatic bay. And if it does, then I could have to go and change the exit out of that automatic bay, and probably go to the west with it. And if I do, then that's where the alley would come into play. That's not my intention, and I don't want to do that, but that's what, that's an option that is very likely could happen, you know, and I need that option.
So, the boundary between the two properties would shift further south by three to four feet?
Correct.
Okay, so then, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, then what that would mean is the, coming out of the automatic bay, they would turn west, and that's a really tight turn, so then they would have to bend north to get out of there?
Correct.
Is that, okay.
Right now, it exits to the east.
Yes.
With that whole line coming down, wouldn't you have the same restriction going east or west if that property line? I mean, as I look at our drawing here, I don't know that there'd be room for the turn either direction.
There would have to be an adjustment made on my building, on the corner of the building, on the structure itself.
What has that got to do with the north alley?
That, if we have to come out to the west, and my customers could go out to the north, out through the alley.
It doesn't affect the alley that he wants to buy, though.
That's to the north, yes, it does.
No, because if there's a boundary dispute, it's going to, it's not going to change it anyway. He's still, he can still buy his section of the alley after the dispute. That's not going to change anything. What you're talking about is the east-west portion of the alley, and he's talking about the north portion of the alley.
That's, you're right, that's where the boundary dispute is, is on the east-west.
Right.
But if I have to change the exit coming out of the car wash, then the north-south alley is going to be, I'm going to have to use something in that area to get cars out of there.
I think we're talking about the same boundary, but...
No, we're not. We're talking about the boundary, you're right, is on the east-west, but where I would have to get the cars out, they would have to use the north-south alley to get out of there.
And Mr. Fisher, Darrell Fisher, is also opposed to the alley vacate.
According to your cards, that's true. Yes.
There's no bearing on this whatsoever, either.
You said you had some paperwork there. Would you go into the outside around and let us look at it, please?
Sure. And also, there was questions brought up about the, at the planning and zoning of what one of these pet washes consisted of, and what they looked like, and so I've got a picture here of one that you can... That's what they are. They're all self-contained, so that's what it looks like.
For you to build that pet wash, aren't you going to have to buy part of your alley, your north-south alley?
No, not according to the dimensions that Mr. Powell gave me.
Can he do this without the variances?
He will need a variance for the percentage of impervious surface or the green space. Other than that, the dimensions that Mr. Gary Fisher spoke about will meet the setback requirements.
So, he'll meet the setback requirements, but he'll violate, we have to have so much green space between a wall and a...
The total site.
Percentage total.
It would actually be for the parking spot. Well, now, a lot of it depends on that, on what you want to do in the alley, you know, and how the boundary dispute ends up. I had intended on having something go in this spring, this coming spring, but, and still do, if it goes that direction, but I can't, I can't say one way or the other now.
Notice, one of the proposals has a time limit on it of 30 days, so it looks like you've got until the end of December to accept the bid. Would it be your intention to do that?
If the, well, I would have to go in front of the variance committee for the green rule, but I'm sure that can be extended without an issue.
Is there any reason that couldn't go on the east side of your building? Why does it have to go on the west?
I don't think there's room for the, on the east side, there's, people use that in the driveway, that driveway, and there's no place to park over there because of the way the vacuums are set up. On that, on that side is the, about, probably about 15-foot to the south of the building is where the main vacuum that people use the most often is.
Keelish, can you help me out with something? I'm confused on this green space rule that he's referring to, and I'm looking at Mr. Wolfswinkle's property. Tell me about the green space, because I see a green strip there on his. Mr. Wolfswinkle does not. What is that about? Tell me why he has to have it, somebody else doesn't.
Well, the existing properties may, may be in compliance with the zoning code, but any changes to the property will have to be bought to the zoning code, which is basically the percentage of concrete space, a percentage of impervious surface, has to be a certain percentage, which is probably 60% on this.
Just the green space, I'm talking about that, I'm talking about, you see all the...
Yeah, well, I'm wondering, is that 30%? Is that what it's on, is it a percentage? David, I want to see what Mr. Fisher has on. Well, is there any further questions for Mr. Fisher?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Terrell Wolfswinkle. Something I didn't probably explain or bring up very well last time was that, well, seeing as you opened up the door, what was going on with the land dispute? The first letter, we'll just touch on that. First letter that I received was that, if you allow me access to this property, I won't fight you in the alley. That's what I got from his attorney. If we look at the way that's set up, north of 1101 where Mr. Fisher's car wash is, yes, the concrete goes up to about two feet, the initial concrete's about two feet into what was initially my lot line. There's a utility pole in between ours. I can't really utilize that as, anyway, and that's something he's already been using, but the way, the boundaries were set up, the way it was staked, it showed my property. There's squatter's rights, if something's used for longer than 10 years, I guess, in Iowa, and no dispute has been raised, it's something, so we're trying to work that out. Even if you put the dog wash on the west, on the west side of his property, he'd still be able to access around and, and go out the way his, his car wash goes out right now. Both Fishers, Fisher Investments and Mr. Fish, Gary Fish, have had concerns about access. But what I find interesting was that they both had the opportunity to at least apply to buy the alley and pave it from where Darrell and his wife stopped back to the alley that I've paved. It's all rock. They won't be able to pave it because it drops down too much, and it'll put water running towards their building. So if there was a concern about access into their property, they would have taken care of that and paved it. And I don't want to block it off, anyway, because my patients love going out that way out to A. Avenue, just a shortcut for them, so there's no intentions of blocking that at all. The biggest reason that I want to have control of the alley is, one of the reasons I bought the property from, from Shad, Baltimore, to start with, is that as long as the alley is the city's, if someone decides to park a truck there, I have no option but to leave it there. I can't ask them to move, because it's a public alley. It's used by everybody, but unless I have the ability to say, you know, you've got to move along, it's private property, they can park that sucker there as long as they want to, and that creates a traffic flow. I will not block the alley because it wouldn't make sense, because my patients go out that way. As far as his, his customers using it, they don't come around through that alley to the west of his building and go out my alley. They come around the post onto my parking and go out already the way it is. So that isn't really going to change anything. I don't really know what the concerns are. It hasn't changed anything, it's just I want to be able to control it, to fix it. I bought the property across the way to build a new office. I brought the plans to Keelish, I have them at Garden to lay out. The green spaces, I have to have at least 30% of that lot in, grass, impervious. I can't have concrete or building on that part of it, so we have to meet those codes. But that's what I'm trying to accomplish with this, nothing more, just so that I can control the alley, so if people park on it, I can ask them to move. If it needs to be fixed, I can fix it. I can change the end right now, right now, the garbage trucks that go out are beating it up, and it's falling apart. It should be widened a little bit, but I'm not going to do that unless I want, that's kind of the long and the short of it.
Question, you said there was a letter exchange, or conversation exchange, that there would be no concern with the alley from Mr. Fisher if the boundary line didn't change?
If I allowed him to have that area that they've conquered, if, if the boundary line that he's, the property that he's currently using, and we allowed him to use that, he had no concerns about me having the alley.
Doesn't that solve it? Because I mean, that's, that's, it's just going to stay concrete, anyway.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that solve it for everybody?
I'm not, that's not going to change. I don't...
Well, but if that does come four feet further, and then he...
I can't, number one, I can't use that space, anyway.
But you could put up a fence, if...
Theoretically, I was told by, again, I didn't know about squatter's rights, but I want to have, what I asked of him was that, okay, if that's the case, then those boundaries have to be changed, it has to be replanted, so that if either one of us sells that, this kind of dispute doesn't come up again. But yeah, that concrete, you can see where the line delineation is, where mine butted up against his, that's not going to change.
Do you have much problem with people parking there and not moving their vehicles?
Yes, periodically, not all the time. It was a lot worse before I bought the property to the west.
And maybe I'm missing something, but if the, if there was not a physical boundary put up between the two properties, then, as I understand it, you'd be fine with vacating the alley?
Well, I would, but his rebuttal to that was a list of demands that was extremely long, and those changed that whole setup. He had that located to put up a fence. He had that located to put up a fence after the last city council.
I had it located, so I knew where my property lines were.
Well, the people that came and located explained to one of my, the guy that works for me, they told him and they told me that that was being located for the purpose of a fence. So that's all I know about that.
There's a, there's a dirt area, if you will, just directly north of his automatic car wash where there's some grasses growing and stuff like that, that is outside of that concrete area that he's talking about. That if we took out those grasses, that there would be some kind of a barrier so people don't go directly through that, just to block the wash. That's the kind of fence I was looking at. It was more of a decorative fence instead of the grasses that are somewhat ugly and hold a lot of trash. That's what I was looking at doing. But I had to know what everything was at. When you call for locate, you have to give them a reason for it. I said, well, the possibility of, can a fence be put in that area? They didn't ask where the fence was going to be, that's what we gave them.
Can, can we go to the pictures? It's in our packet. It doesn't show up real well, I guess, like it does in our picture. But you're saying the only part of the fence you're talking about is where that grassy area is now? You wouldn't go along the whole property?
I don't see how we can sit here and talk about the legal part of this. I, I talked to both of them and said, you need to get the legal part worked out. There's only one attorney sitting at this table that I know of, and he's not involved. I mean...
It's from this, here's the utility pole. There's some grass that goes over where the phone box and stuff like that and extends to here. That's where the grass is. His concrete stops on the back, the concrete that he's using stops on the backside of that grass here and extends straight east and straight west to his property, property lines. It doesn't come any, it does not come on this side of the utility pole, where that concrete is poured. That's what I was talking about, possibly putting a fence just to create a barrier so that people aren't driving. He's got the grass there now, it would just be a decorative fence, it would just look better.
That grass that's there now, is that on your property or your property?
That's my property.
Okay.
That grass has been maintained and that area's been maintained by the car wash since it was, since it was been there.
That's not true. It, he was, he had some stuff there.
I agree and argue about this, but when he had this located, or not argue, that's what the lawyer is for.
Okay.
When he had this located, he had it located over to the east, way past the light pole in that area that he has just explained to you, just far enough that his customers could still get into his area, and that's where he stopped it. So that the fence could be built over to do nothing but restrict the traffic out of my car wash.
When you do...
And that's the long and the short.
When you do property locates, they have to do pins. There's a pin on the west side of our property that's pinned in the flags there. On the east side of the property, you have to cut a hash because the pin is underneath the concrete, so they cut a hash in there. When you do utility locates, and there's, there's already an easement, and when you ask for utilities, they're going to mark it wherever they find a line. You don't tell them where to stop, where to go. They're going to mark wherever they find a wire. That's why when they put flags along our property, when they did for gas, it was all the way around when Darrell was doing some different things with his building. So it wasn't necessary, this is where I'm going to stop my fence, this is where I'm going to go with the fence. That's where they did the locates. I'm not going to put a fence in. There's not going to be a fence unless I put a decorative one. But I guess if he doesn't want a decorative one, then he doesn't have a decorative one. But I just want to be able to control the alley. That's all.
So where is the legal process at, John?
I don't know. Last time I talked to the attorney, they haven't said anything. Some of the demands that I asked, he was talking about the list of demands, was if he was going to take over that concrete, that he should fix an area that's caving in. There's a cost to that. That, one of the requests was that if I'm giving you the property, having control of it, that you pay for the, the locates of having it surveyed. That was my list.
That wasn't completed.
Well, there was other things the attorney, but that was the main part of the list.
No, the other things that restricted me were I was not allowed to do anything with my property as far as selling it or doing anything without his approval. And that would not go, that, this...
If we did...
Would not go with the sale of the property.
That was...
It would not go as an easement, it wouldn't go as anything.
That was the initial offering?
Be completed along the line of if, if someone bought my property, this would pin and he would be able to put the fence up back anyplace he wanted to, on that line.
Initially, when we sent him a letter, and number one, this isn't counsel, counsel concern, but as long as everybody's opening up the question. Initially, what I offered to him was to have a no-rent, five-year lease to use the property. That was before the attorney explained to me what the squatter's rights were in Iowa. My attorney didn't really give me good representation, tell me this is what's going on. So that was my, my first proposal. They, they refused it. I wrote up a second one. Whether or not his attorney's given that to him, I don't know. But the initial one, yes, had all those different things, that if he decided to sell the property, then that would be redressed. But that's been changed because they refused it. So we move on to something different. Now that I understand what the, the laws are in Iowa, I really don't have, other than getting everything worked out, make sure that everybody knows where the boundaries are.
Can we get on the alley?
Yeah, so I mean, you guys are asking questions, so I...
I did, I wanted to understand it, because to me, it, this impacts how I vote on the alley.
Okay. I mean, that, that's how that sets up. He's going to have access to the concrete. I can't do anything about it legally, but I would just like to have, make sure everything is set up the way it's supposed to be, so that on the plat, it's taken care of, so everybody knows exactly where they're gonna dress, so this isn't happening down the road again. I don't think that's too much to ask. But it's not going to change his egress, or inter, his use of the, what he's got right now is not going to change.
No matter where the boundary is. If the boundary changes, it's still not going to change...
Well, if, 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 if we change the boundary, I mean, then yeah, but I, I can't put a fence there anyway.
That, to me, that's a huge if, because that car wash has been there, what, 20 years, 25 years?
Well, over 20.
I don't think the boundary's going to change.
No. I mean, that, that's not going to change.
Right.
Legally, right now, he can change it.
No, I can't.
No, he can't.
No, I can't.
Yeah, but then, but it sounds like the way things are going, that if, if you wanted to sell that car wash to someone else, then everything gets, gets put back into some flexibility.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, but...
I can't do anything without his approval.
That's not true, because...
Terry Wood, if you could, can't you quick-deed it to him, and then it would be his? And no, a lot of expense for anybody?
It can be, it can be quick-deeded, yes, but then those property lines should be taken care of. Should be laid out in the plat so that it shows that that moved over.
I agree with that.
Okay, and that's all, that's all we really talked about.
And I told you both before, this should have been worked out before it ever came back here, but it's not. We're here, we are again.
There we are, that's right. Okay, there are questions for Mr. Wolfson Winkle. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. So I guess the next item would be, do we, do we have a motion to support the sale, vacation and sale of the north-south public alley?
So move.
Okay, discussion.
I'm just going to make one quick call. I'm just looking at the reality of this whole thing. And I've been out there and I've looked at it. And again, you know, I, I'm definitely not trying to restrict your business at all, but when I look at, if you come out there, and I, I brought this up last time, if you come out and you go west and then you try to go north, it is such a tight turn. I just don't see how you can make that without making that whole thing back south again. You know, I'd, I'd have to see that whole, I've got a full-size pickup truck and there's no way I'm making that turn. Couldn't do it. And, and I would, and so I'm just looking at this as the reality of where I'm at with that. So I just, you know, with what he owns on both sides of that, I'm just having a tough time seeing how that's going to restrict your access on that. So that's, that's where I'm at there. I don't know how anybody else feels about it.
I'm still looking at it, as we've got two businesses that say no and one that says yes, until, you know, they work something out. I'm still a no.
The two that are saying no has nothing to do with what he's wanting to buy. What he wants to buy does not affect those two businesses at all.
They seem to feel it does.
They think it do, it does, Aaron. I don't think that's our job to tell them what their business is.
A common sense standpoint, it doesn't.
They say it does.
Yeah.
It's all I can go by.
Let me ask this question. I don't even know if this is more a question for you, Dave. Can we table this for a period of time so Mr. Wolfson Winkle doesn't have to go back through and spend money? This is the second time he's spent money. Table it to see if the dog wash either gets billed or doesn't, or pet wash, and until the dispute's worked out. And we just table it to that point? If the dispute's worked out, where they agree and we can sell the alley, I'd love to sell it. We don't want owned alleys. But what's our options there?
To, to respond to your narrow question, the answer of course is yes. Now, I'd preface that, that life, as you know, in a small town is interesting. I historically have represented, Terry, my partner Gerald, has historically represented Mr. Fisher, so we have steered both parties to their counsel for the dispute they've got that's going on now. And I mentioned it, we've of course talked about that, and you guys are aware of that. To your narrow question though, obviously, yes, it could be tabled. As Joe has recognized, I mean, we're actually talking two different things there. I mean, there's the lot line dispute as to the line running east-west between the properties, whereas the legal or the narrow question, political question for the council, of course, is the vacation of the north-south alley. Although, as you've noted, they are kind of, there is some linkage between the two issues.
Well, what I heard is if they can work out the boundary dispute, Mr. Fisher doesn't care if, if the alley's vacated, then that solves the whole thing.
I think what we're asking, David, is can, if we sit on it, like Doug is, would Terry not have to pay the money again if we sit on it, you know?
You say pay the money again?
Well, I don't know if he's talking about, it's costing money for the second time, he says. I believe him.
It's $100 to reapply to go in to PNC and send everything out. That's, that's the dollars they're spending.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead, Terry.
And one other question. Okay, if you consider the table, I'm just going to press this up, and you're going, how long do I, because I'm not going to move forward with this and have Darren and stuff draw everything up if I don't own the alley. So how long do I have to give Mr. Fisher? Yes, we're going to work something out. I know it's going to happen. The attorneys just haven't gotten back and I don't know why, but they haven't worked things out, so I just need to know how much time I have to give him and if he's going to build it, he's not going to, still not let me own the alley, that's fine. Then I'll leave the, the new lot that I purchased empty. But I just need to know how much time I have to give you guys to make a decision about whether I come back by the alley and get things going.
Terry, I don't think we can tell you, because the clock doesn't start until you get the legal part worked out. Then I could, then we could probably, I will all say, Mr. Fisher's got to come up with some plan and move ahead.
And it might be Mr. Fisher doesn't want to do it for a while, you know, he might want to wait six, seven, eight months. He may not have the money right now or the vision he needs to go forward with it, too.
Doug, you can only table this for two weeks. Is that all you can do?
Well, and it can be retabled and retabled. At the point, it's, it'll be on the agenda at the very next meeting.
I, I would say this, I, I think we should call for the question, and if it fails, I would certainly entertain the motion of refunding Mr. Wolfson Winkle's money, and then he can come back when this is worked out, that he's not out anything. Maybe that's a better solution than keeping it on the agenda for...
Yeah, to come back and come back.
Possibly infinity. I, I don't, I don't know.
Because from my perspective, as long as he's got, as long as the car wash has access out the back, to me, the dog wash really doesn't matter from what we've heard. If he's got out access out the back, I want to sell the alley. But... I got a question here. Then we can develop the other property and it's good for our property.
Hear me out. He wants to put a dog wash, cat wash, whatever it is, on the west side of that building. Okay? So let's say the north alley stays open, he's still going to have to purchase or do something with the alley that next to gets his car wash in order to exit out.
That's not what they said.
Well, if you look at the map, if you come out of the car, I, I washed my car today, I know exactly...
So do I.
Okay, all right. But if you make, yeah, if you go out and make a left, he's on that alley right there, so he would have to purchase that part of that alley.
No, it's still open.
It's still open.
It's, it's...
So anybody, he doesn't have to...
Right, well, I'm just saying, that's another, he, he would need to, oh, just use it as a city.
Just use it as a city alley.
That's to do with the alleys anyways.
Wonder if Fisher Investments wants semis to come through that alley?
Yeah, to me, it's a convenience for...
I mean, if I was Terry and I paved it, I'd, I'd wouldn't want those semis, because I'm sure he didn't pave it thick enough for semis, but it's still an alley. And a semi, they don't, you're not going to back them up onto A Avenue, they're going to pull in there and go out.
Yeah.
Of course, it's there, it's convenient.
I mean, that's the problem. We've already closed one, two alleys and we got two left, and it's...
We don't even know what Mr. Fisher's idea about this is, except for he's the guy that does it.
But, you know, he's not here, so, but he did sign the card.
Takes three readings, right?
Yep.
So you still have four weeks.
The other Fisher's worried about parking, not semis coming through. The alley's, the way I understand it, is not going to be closed anyway, right? It's not going to be closed, so they can run the semis. If Fisher needs semis, he can run them through there. He's worried about parking, and he's not, he's not going to gain that much parking one way or the other. The alley's already open on the side of his building, so...
Well, I'd like to see them do their development, but I think we need to hold it back somehow until this gets worked out.
Well, there's four more weeks to work it out, because we've got two more readings.
Yeah.
So they would have four more weeks to at least work it out.
If they got rid of the attorneys, they might get it done.
I understand. They walk out there outside, they probably have it done in two minutes.
All right.
Any other further comments or questions? We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
For say?
Yes.
Walling?
No.
Yates?
Yes.
Callagury?
Yes.
Jimenez?
No.
Moore?
No.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
Okay, it passes 4-3. Moving on. Let's get this to the end of the regular agenda. Okay, items from city staff, we don't have our city manager here. So city clerk, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, city attorney, anything from council?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay.
You're a big chance.
Now, as we get towards the end, there's an opportunity for the city council members to inform other members of the council and the public on things that are going on. to inform other members of the council and the public on things that are going on. And so traditionally, what I do is go on down the line and just ask for anything, but I noticed this time around, it's the end of, getting to the end of a quarter, and that's when we do our updates on various boards and commissions that council members sit on. And so, you know, in my case, I guess, I sit on the Mahaska County Conference Board. They haven't met yet, at least recently, and so I don't have anything to report. Tom Walling, you're on the 911, emergency 911 board.
Yep, and this is actually the month that we have our one meeting in. And I tried to confirm the date. Randy sent it to me tentatively, and I think he said the 15th, which is our next council meeting. So that may get moved, but I'm not sure about the date, but we will meet on the budget again for next year.
Okay. Enterprise Zone Commission, Mr. Yates?
There's been no activity.
Okay, Housing Trust Fund Committee, Joe?
There's been activity, but I didn't go to the last meeting. I was traveling somewhere.
Over there, man.
Yeah.
Okay. Oskaloosa Area Chamber Development Group, I sit on that, and we've got a few things going on right now. You may remember the Roger Brooks, the event that took place. And so the branding exercise we're going through for the city of Oskaloosa, that's in process. I want to say a big thank you to the 1,500 people who answered the surveys as to what they liked and disliked, suggestions that they had for leadership in Oskaloosa. I was a little nonplussed by the consultant at first when they said, "Yes, here you go. We are not going to summarize these 1,500 responses for you. Go at it yourself." And so on a Sunday afternoon, you sit down and start reading through those things. That was one of the best exercises I've done as far as, you know, if you're going to dedicate five hours to something, going through and seeing so many responses that were almost all optimistic, saying, "Yes, we believe in this place. Yes, here's some more ideas. These are the things we want to see done differently. This is where we can improve." I mean, it was done in such a way that it was very constructive. And so with that spirit in mind, then the branding committee, I mean, we all got a dose of it. And so we're starting to work towards what it is we want to do as far as coordinating the efforts within Oskaloosa. Other things going on, we've got a lighted Christmas parade coming up on Saturday, or Saturday, on Thursday night, and then the lighting of the Christmas tree on Friday. So that's happening. And then also, Main Street Oskaloosa has been working with its Main Street designation from the state. The folks at the state level of Main Street aren't real anxious to see Main Street and the chamber combined with one another. And so they're telling us that we have to separate the two, and so that's what we're trying to do, is split the budgets out and be able to say that this is definitely a Main Street activity and so spend the money on that, whereas something that isn't a Main Street thing, that could fall into the chamber. But trying to draw the lines between those organizations, still continue to be coordinated, but yet separate their budgets and create some clear lines as to whose responsibility is what.
That's interesting because that's the second time that's come up. I don't know why we're reaction, but approved it two months before.
Yep. So anyway, that's it for me. The Joint County Mahaska Disaster Services Emergency Planning Administration, Aaron?
Yeah, we're still working with the school on purchasing the bus barn. It's pretty welcome, almost complete. In fact, we did some work on it tonight, I think. And we're working on our budget, which is getting pretty low. We're meeting in about two weeks again, so...
Okay. Joint Law Enforcement Center, that's you again.
Have not met yet.
Okay, how about Mahaska County Agency on Aging?
Well, we've paid a big chunk down on our loan because of the money we've raised, begged, whatever you want to call it. We've still got a ways to go and we're still working on that.
Okay. Okay, last thing, Mahaska Community Recreation Foundation, Scotty?
Yeah, we met, but since we've met, you all got that slicky report, which was well done and brought everyone's attention.
With that, anything else? Joe?
Yes. You mentioned about that report or that survey. Is there going to be a report on that? Is there a graph report or something, or?
When I was going through it, I was generating some of my own graphs based on how often certain words showed up in the data, that sort of thing. But as far as reports back to the city council, no, I don't think so.
I'm just curious to see.
There is a branding committee that has met several times and gone through that data. And then off of that has been summarized and then building, there's been a couple of meetings since then to kind of gel ideas together and come up with some common themes. But as far as what the city council sees, no, there probably isn't.
Just curious to see what the, you know, what the results were.
Yep, I'd be, I'd be happy to share the...
The graph?
The Excel spreadsheet that came with all that in it. Aaron?
Nothing.
Okay, Scotty? Tom?
Nothing, sir.
Is the $250,000 airport project that's in the minutes, the same project that was taken off the table one other time?
Yeah, that was a good...
At our local airport now, and they were going to do it, and then I thought the FAA got involved and said, "No, we aren't, we don't want you to do that now until we see what's going on." That was about three years ago.
Yeah, it's not the way I remember it. I believe that what they did was say that they would be willing to forward that money into what, the work that was being done on the new airport and some of that funding at the time.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I don't know that the FAA told them that they didn't favor it as much as the commission went to the FAA and said, "We'd like to repurpose this money."
But now they're, they're wanting to spend it again on what we have now, is the way I read it.
Yeah, yeah, don't know. Jason?
No, sir.
Okay, I don't have anything to add. Do you have a motion for adjournment?
It's a move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.